The January 28th, 2019 regular business meeting of the Waynesboro City Council. Mr. Allen would you plan to lead us in Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, sir.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would remind those in attendance that if you wish to speak this evening, there's a sign up sheet in the back. And during the public comment period, we'll welcome and look forward to hearing from you at that point. Also, just want to note, just as a, for those that might be in attendance for the proposed transportation plan review public hearing this evening, we're going to have another, another go at it at our subsequent meeting. But rather than rescheduling it whole, completely, we're going to hold that public meeting this evening, but also offer a subsequent date, allowing the public additional time to review and provide additional comment before council takes action on it. So just as a heads up, if you wanted to dig in deeper, you'll have that opportunity to do so. Second on the agenda this evening is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries? Thank you. Number four. Sandersen's feeling better. He's at home ill this evening. Number three are matters from city council members. Is there anything, any folks, anyone would like to share this evening?
I just had the comment, Mr. Mayor, that my monthly meeting to meet with constituents is this, the first Tuesday at nine o'clock, usually meet at the French press just across the street. And I will be there. It'll be February the 5th at nine o'clock. Did I say two o'clock? Nine o'clock at the French press and just open conversations, whatever people are interested. I'd be happy to talk to you then. Thank you.
Wonderful. Awesome. Anybody else? No? I'm just, sure, the Vice Mayor and I have, we're, our second visitation in, start up a small business or business visitation program for companies in the city. And we enjoyed a really remarkable discussion with Virginia Panel Corporation and of course Drake a few weeks prior and look forward to continuing to that. That is a, just been a really interesting and insightful process. So I appreciate staff arranging that and for the companies being so welcoming and inviting. Also, just situational awareness, Mr. Hamp was kind enough to join me to head out to Richmond last week where we attended the Virginia Municipal League's local government day and was able to squeeze in a few conversations with some delegates from across Virginia, specifically to advocate and create situational awareness for our work towards the museum, the Virginia Natural History Museum here in our downtown and then as well for K through 12 investments. And so for those keeping track in the audience, currently, the Commonwealth of Virginia doesn't participate at all in capital investments for K through 12 education in terms of capital investments for buildings and alike. And so part of the work that I and others have been involved with is trying to advocate for that and to create a statewide conversation. There were several bills that have been introduced this session. We don't think that they will advance much farther than an idea, but at least the conversation has been started and would, would hope that we continue that. And my specific appreciation out to Delegate Bell for continuing to champion, champion this issue even as his swan song ends this fall. So, but, all right. Number four on the agenda this evening is proclamation of Black History Month, which is awesome. So I have a wonderful proclamation. Estella, if you're here. And do you like to say anything prior to, I can read the proclamation now or? Ms. Randolph, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and for the record.
Good evening. I'm Estella Randolph. I live at 452 Port Republic Road here in Waynesboro, Virginia. And I just want to say thank you to my city council for always showing up, always backing us, always giving us your encouragement because this is how we as a city progress. All of us are very important to one another. So I just wanted to say to you that I appreciated the Black History Museum that's in Rosenwall, the Black School here in Waynesboro. Everyone appreciates it. And you know that Ms. Augustine Bellamy was the torch bearer for Black History. And I just happened to come along and work with her to be able to just follow in her footsteps. So I wanted to say to this council, thank you for all those who are here and those who are obviously doing other things, thank you because the city of Waynesboro is very important and we are hospitality in the valley. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Well, if you wouldn't mind staying, I'll go read the, read the proclamation and come down there and do a handshake with you. So whereas Dr. Carter Goodwin Woodson, distinguished African American author, editor, scholar, and historian, who is known as the father of Black History, founded the Association for the Study of African American Life and History in September 1915 and Black History Month in 1976. And whereas the theme of this year's celebration is Black Migrations focusing on the continuous movement of African Americans to new destinations and subsequently to new social realities. And whereas, beginning in the 20th century, South African American migration included relocation from farms to cities and from the South to the Northeast and Midwest. The period quickly gave rise to a growing number of Black industrial leaders and Black entrepreneurs. In Europe, African American performers and musicians also immigrated to Paris and other European capitals where American jazz became an instant hit. Whereas, along with the emergence of new music genres like ragtime, blues, and jazz, the Harlem Renaissance of New York signaled a blossoming of the visual and literary arts. Whereas, the history of the United States is rich in inspirational stories of great men and noble women whose actions, words, and achievements have united Americans and contributed to the success and prosperity of the United States. Be resolved by the Mayor of the City of Waynesboro on behalf of the city council takes great pleasure in recognizing February 2019 as Black History Month and urges all citizens to join in celebrating the accomplishments of African Americans during Black History Month and encourages the people of Waynesboro to recognize the many talents, achievements, and contributions that African Americans make to their communities. And be it further resolved that the clerk of the council transmit copies of this resolution to the curator of the African American History Museum in Waynesboro, Virginia for appropriate distribution and witness thereof, yada, yada, yada. Signed, Terry Schwartz. It's a little bit warmer than the parade the other night. All right. Great. Item number five is to receive a presentation of the results and recommendations of the Rosser Avenue 340 corridor study from Ms. Ann Cundy of the Central Shenandoah Planning District Commission and Mr. Grant Sanders of the Virginia Department of Transportation. Ms. Cundy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. So my name is Ann Cundy and I guess I'll, it's ready to go. Thanks, Luke. I'm the Transportation Program Manager for the Central Shenandoah Planning District Commission and I also staff the Stanton Augusta Waynesboro Metropolitan Planning Organization or MPO because that's a bit of a mouthful. So with me tonight is Grant Sanders. Grant is the Regional Operations and Highway Engineer for Northwest Operations with VDOT over in Stanton. And tonight, I'm going to take a couple of minutes to go over what the SAW MPO is and what we do. And then we'll dive into the Rosser Avenue study and its recommendations and earnest. So our MPO was formed in 2012 following the 2010 census. At that point, our Stanton, Waynesboro, and urbanized Augusta County in between hit a population threshold of 50,000 people. So federal law says that when you hit that threshold, you engage in transportation planning at a regional scale. That process is based on a coordinated, continuous, comprehensive urban transportation planning model and that's undertaken cooperatively between state governments and local governments. So our three voting members are Augusta County, Stanton, and Waynesboro and VDOT. So we're funded through grants from the Federal Highway Administration and Federal Transit. Those grants are matched with 10% state and 10% local funding and the three member localities pay a third of that 10% local share each. And they each have two votes on the MPO's policy board and VDOT has the seventh. Our operating budget for this current fiscal year is about $327,000. So that local match comes out to about $7,900 apiece for the three. One of the activities that the MPO engages in every single year is a small area study and those identify regional transportation issues, develop fundable solutions to those, and we also make sure that they advance the goals of local comprehensive and economic development plans and the MPO's long range transportation plan. So that long range transportation plan is our 25-year planning document. That's our, our primary document for the MPO. And from that, we identify these small area studies. So the first one that we did was for the intersection of US 250 and Lifecore Drive slash Woodrow Wilson Avenue at WWRC to improve operations and safety there. That wrapped up and we embarked on our study here in Waynesboro. The Rosser Avenue study ended about halfway through 2018 and since then, we have moved over to Stanton. We're trying to rotate them, rotate them as best we can. So in Stanton, we're looking at Richmond Road between the interstate and about Frontier Drive in the vicinity of that new commercial development. So with that very quick overview of the MPO and some of what we do, we'd like to talk a bit about our Rosser Avenue study. So we selected this corridor because of its regional significance with the interstate interchange and it being a regional shopping destination and the unique situation that we have two VDOT owned and operated signals in between a series of city signals. So in total, nine signals in a pretty short span and a lot of commercial and retail growth we've experienced in the last few years. So tightly spaced signals and this unique challenge of having these two signals that are owned and operated by VDOT that currently, or as of two weeks ago, were not coordinated or communicating with the city's signals. So we saw this study as a low cost opportunity to come up with some implementable solutions that we could go out and do in the very near term. Typically, you do a transportation study, you apply for funding, maybe 10 years later, you're breaking ground. In this case, it was more like six months. So, I'm going to actually go back to that aerial a little bit more. So do want to note that our study area does extend down to Lad Road in the county, but we are taking a look at this section of Rosser. So Grant's going to go into more detail about the signals and the timing study that we engaged in, and I'm going to talk about some of the other recommendations. But overall, our purpose and need for this study were to come up with some solutions to address the fact that we've had this recent commercial and retail growth. We have these nine closely spaced intersections, these separate managing entities, the city and the state, and also make sure that this corridor will function well. If we have an incident on I-64 and a lot of drivers are getting off the interstate, we want to be able to move them efficiently to an alternate route. So our goals were to improve the safety operations along the corridor, communications between all of those signals. And in the meantime, of course, maintain the great air quality that we have around here by not having a lot of congestion and unnecessarily idling, starting and stopping. So conversely, we wanted to reduce our travel time and delay along the corridor and reduce congestion. All right. Let me go back. So our study had two separate deliverables and really two phases. The first phase of that was going out and observing the corridor and coming up or doing a lot of analysis, which Grant's going to talk about, but coming up with a timing plan for those signals. And that's what Grant's going to talk about. But at the same time, we asked our consultant, Kim Lee Horn, to go ahead and look at that corridor and identify four or five, even six low cost improvements that could be made out there that would complement the signal timing plan but could be implemented independent of it and have some independent utility. And we asked that they be less than $500,000, which is in the, in the transportation world, pretty inexpensive. And I think you'll be pleased to see that the recommendations that we are presenting to you tonight are a good bit below that. So we're going to start up at our northeast, right, extent of the corridor at Tiffany Drive. And the recommendation here really focuses on making improvements for the pedestrians that we know are crossing Rosser Avenue here because of the residential development just to the east. So we're recommending striped crosswalks, ADA compliant curb ramps, and pedestrian activated crossing signals at both of these. In addition, a short little path that would connect you from that curb ramp to the existing sidewalk on the side of Rosser. That's the primary improvement here. I also want to note that the recommendation is to convert the protected left turn there to a flashing yellow arrow signal. Protected left turn meaning solid green arrow for us non-transportation engineers in the room. So the cost estimate for this is just under $90,000. Moving down to Rosser and Lennox, the recommendation for this intersection is actually to remove the signal altogether. This is one of four signalized intersections that allows you to access the Walmart parking lot and it sees the least traffic and the fewest calls to that signal for turns out of the shopping center and onto Rosser. So the recommendation takes it from a signalized intersection to making it a right in, right out, left in, but eliminating the ability to turn left out of this intersection here and then creating right and left turn bays once you're into the shopping center. So this, in addition to improving the traffic flow along Rosser by allowing those platoons to proceed to the next signal pretty seamlessly, also eliminates a turning movement if you're not going to have a signal that, that left out. So safety improvements there as well. Moving on down to the intersection with Luda Witt, this is one of the busiest intersections, of course, in the city, if not the entire MPO in terms of the number of cars and trucks that move through there every single day. So coupled with that condition of heavy through movements and turning movements, we have four commercial entrances right here at the intersection. So this recommendation really is about access management and improving safety. So it suggests extending the median to create a dedicated left turn lane but eliminating the opportunity to turn left into these two entrances. It also extends this left turn bay, but this is really all about eliminating opportunities for conflicts, for angle crashes at that, at that location. And the recommendation or the cost estimate is just under $105,000. Moving down to the interchange with I-64, we're looking at the, here's my pointer, eastbound and westbound on and off ramps. And the recommendation for both of these is to take the current protected left turning movements onto those ramps and turn those into flashing yellow arrow protective permissive phases. Now, we do want to note that before you could do that, or before, in this case, VDOT would do that, these being the VDOT signals, they would have to further evaluate that left turning phasing and make sure that this is an appropriate location, appropriate context for that flashing yellow arrow. But a flashing yellow arrow can clear your queue faster and also reduce that risky behavior of you waited and waited, but you were the last car in the queue and you're going to make a risky movement to get your left, right? So you can get more cars through that left turn phase with that flashing yellow arrow. So the baseline cost to switch out that signal is 38.5, but I want to note that on this westbound interchange, I think you all probably have observed that, especially in the afternoon peak hour, the PM peak hour, your westbound off ramp tends to back up. And the concern is that in the near future, you may have traffic backing up onto the main line of I-64, which we definitely want to avoid. So this recommendation, it's a bit more because it recommends some sort of vehicle detection down here on the ramp. So it knows when your queue has exceeded a certain length that you need to give that right turning movement off of the ramp some additional green time and clear that queue so you don't back up onto the main line. So I think this was just to draw attention to this tiny aerial and show you where those recommendations would be. But these are for the left turns onto the on ramps. And then our final recommendation is at the southern end of this corridor. This is Rosser Avenue and Town Center Drive. So the second entrance to the Shenandoah Village Shopping Center. And this one, a little bit of out of the box thinking, again, probably is going to require some additional evaluation, but here's what our consultant observed. He saw that most folks are using the Shenandoah Village Drive, I'm pointing up here, but as if it's up there, but you know where we are. Most folks are using those two left turns to enter that shopping center and this intersection, although today it has a double left turn, is pretty underutilized and currently may be a little bit overbuilt. So his thought was, what if you eliminate your outside left turn lane, create one and another flashing yellow arrow, protected permissive condition? And over time, drivers might come to realize that if you bypass Shenandoah Village Drive and go down to the next intersection, you could get your left a little quicker. Do you want to note that this requires some further evaluation, notably the fact that this outside left turn becomes the main through lane on Town Center Drive? So some further evaluation, but an interesting concept to consider. And then quickly, I want to talk about some of the funding options for these low cost improvements. For some of the most affordable ones, of course, you have your capital improvements program for things possibly like the Tiffany Drive sidewalks and curb ramps and the like. There's also SmartScale, which funds projects at 100%, but is very competitive and comes around every two years. Another funding program through VDOT is revenue sharing, which requires a 50% match on the part of the locality, but can be a good opportunity for some lower cost projects. Revenue sharing runs on opposite years as SmartScale. But then every year, VDOT has the Highway Safety Improvement Program, which now is, I mean, it's always been an opportunity for cities, but definitely being marketed that much more so now. And the HCP program can allow you to put together a package for multiple flashing yellow arrow conversions along a corridor as a systemic upgrade. So that's a good opportunity there and the HCP program comes around every year. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Grant to talk about signal coordination and communication and why that's such an important piece of what we set out to do for this corridor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members for having us here tonight. As Ann said, my name is Grant Sanders. I'm the Regional Signal and Freeway Operations Engineer for VDOT's Northwest Region, which encompasses 23 counties on this side of the mountain and, and on the other side of the mountain over towards Charlottesville and areas north of there. So one of the purposes or one of the parts of this study was also to undertake a timing plan improvement to upgrade and improve the signal timing. And one of the things that this can do is we're, we're looking at trying to coordinate the signals all through this area so that as I enter the corridor from the north or from the south and proceed down the corridor, ideally, I want to hit green at the next signals as I go along. I mean, what's more frustrating than having to stop every time you hit a signal on, on a corridor? So that's, that's what signal timing coordination is, is syncing those signals. So this is kind of a, a process for doing a coordination project, all which was part, let me see here, the, the part outlined in the, in the dashed line is what was done as part of this small area study with the consultants. So initially, they go out, just do a qualitative analysis of field conditions, observe what's going on, where are the excessive queues occurring at, where is the congestion occurring at, and get an idea of, a visual idea so that there are, they know, okay, what I'm seeing in my analysis, my technical analysis also matches what I'm seeing on the ground. Helps to coordinate and kind of calibrate the traffic models that we put together. Next piece of that is data collection, which essentially, we're going to each of these signalized intersections and taking turning movement counts. We want to count who's turning left, going straight through, and who's turning right at each approach as that helps us to develop how much green time is needed for each of the movements. And then we go back, the consultant goes back, we have traffic modeling programs, put all that information in, the lane geometry, the traffic volumes, the existing signal timing, and to paint a picture of what the existing conditions are like. And then from there, they develop upgraded and improved timing plans to achieve that coordination. And one of the things I want to mention with, with coordination is that as you coordinate and give priority to the main line or to Rosser Avenue in this case, the side streets may see a little bit of an increase in delay. We try not to do that to the extent possible, but with that amount of traffic that's on Rosser Avenue, that does get the priority and so to move that traffic through. And so from there, we developed the improvements, the recommendations of what's our signal cycle length going to be, how much green time are we going to give to the approaches and how are we going to put in new timing plans to approach this? So that was all part of the study that, the small area study that Ann just talked about. And so we have this timing plan now. One of the things that we can do right now, one of the improvement recommendations from there that we can do is to actually take and implement the timing that has been developed. And so VDOT, and I'll mention that timing, signal timing improvements and coordination are one of the cheapest, most cost effective ways to achieve a great efficiency in moving traffic. It's a, it's a low cost option to be able to see great improvements. There's, there's high benefit cost ratios that we see from these studies. And so VDOT went ahead and we hired the consultant, Kim Lee Horn, to go ahead and implement the signal timing improvements. And that is these last three boxes down here. And so the signal timing improvements that were developed as part of the study, Kim Lee Horn came over, or the consultant came over and they did the coding, the necessary coding for the timing parameters. Each intersection has a computer or a signal controller in it. So they put together the coding needed to download to those controllers and then do the field implementation, which involves actually going out to the field, downloading the information into the controllers, and then watching and observing. And the most important thing is making adjustments as, as they see the traffic react to the new timing plan. That's one of the key parts because many times the, the technical analysts will say this and you'll put it in the field and go, that's not at all what we're seeing in the analysis. So that's a key part. I do want to mention that this, these two first boxes have been done, those first circles, the coding and the field implementation. the coding and the field implementation, they were done last week. I don't know if, you may have seen people at the signal boxes, I don't know if you did or not, but that was achieved last week and the results are pretty promising. I got some qualitative analysis from our consultant that indicated that we're seeing some improvement in some of these problem areas. I don't have the full report yet, that's still to be developed, the technical report, the final conclusions, but that's what they were doing last week. And so what they'll come back and do later is, as traffic adjusts to the new timing plans, they'll come back after a couple of weeks and do some follow-up implementation, some follow-up adjustments if there's some fine tuning that's needed, because you kind of want to give it some time for the traffic to adjust to all those things. And so that's where we are today. Let's get this forwarding again here. Again, just an overall view of the map there with our signal, VDOT signals at lad and then at the ramp, interchange ramps. So all of these were implemented with the new timing plans. We spent time with one of the signal technicians with the city of Waynesboro and so that they could be involved in the process and aware of what's going on. And say we had a, again, the results looked promising on the implementation. Let me go back to that. So one of the things I want to mention that they observed out in the timing implementation is that some of the equipment in the city of Waynesboro is a little bit older, some of the controllers, and they're having, they were having some difficulty keeping the clocks, the internal computer clocks synced to where, and that's important because the clocks all have to be on the same time. And because of power and the way electrical power comes into the cabinets, the clocks can drift over time. So one of the things that they talked about that the city technician will have to do or will need to do is to go out and reset the clocks in some of these problem cabinets every week or so. I can't remember, was it every couple of weeks or, anyway, every couple of weeks to go out and spend a fairly significant amount of time resetting these clocks to keep them synced. That kind of leads to the next part of the discussion, which I think Ann might address a little bit in terms of, what we want to do going forward from here is keep those clocks synced. And there's things and there's ways, there's equipment that can be implemented to be able to do this without the technician having to spend a lot of time doing this, because you want your technicians in other areas doing more important things than resetting clocks. And so there's some opportunities here for VDOT and the city to coordinate with each other in terms of upgrading, possible upgrades to communications to keep the clock synced along the corridors. There's a whole variety of possibilities that I think further discussions need to occur between city and VDOT to kind of take that to the next level of keeping the system coordinated and up to speed. So. Are you going to talk about the last slide on here? I'll turn this back over to Ann.
Okay, to wrap this up, we implemented the timing plans last week. A couple of my staff members and I actually went out and joined Kimberly Horn in the field and observed how they did that. And it really was remarkable just as a layperson to see how much more efficiently we were moving through that corridor during the lunchtime rush. So fall of 2019 would be the city's and VDOT's first opportunity to put together any revenue sharing or highway safety improvement program, grant applications potentially to implement any of those improvements. And then, as Grant alluded to, ongoing, there are opportunities for the city and VDOT to continue to coordinate the operation of those signals, be that purchasing equipment or just agreements on the maintenance plan to go out and keep them re-timed. So with that, we are happy to answer any questions that you may have. And again, thank you for some time tonight.
Thank you. Any questions?
I had one question, just to, I'm trying to understand sort of the reference to the flashing yellows. Will there be a green arrow at all that then turns yellow at some point, or will it just be the yellow arrow and proceed?
Want to talk about that one?
Sure.
That's true.
Yeah. Yeah, so a flashing yellow arrow, basically what we're talking about here is called a protected permissive phasing. So there's, the protected portion is the green arrow. So there is still part of the operation that brings up a green arrow. And then the flashing yellow arrow provides an opportunity for those left turns to turn, provided that the oncoming traffic is clear and it's safe to do so. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much. Thanks so much for coming out and it's great information, very much appreciate it. All right, item number six is to receive a presentation of the 2018 Annual Report for the Planning Commission from Mr. Andrew Kelly. Mr. Kelly, if you could introduce yourself and your address, please.
Sure. Andrew J. Kelly, and I live at 2408 Village Drive in Waynesboro. And as the slides are getting set up, I want to say thanks to a few people. One, the council members and the, actually, the residents of Waynesboro for their continued support and input that they give every year, because without it, we couldn't, you know, we couldn't do the proper planning and everything. I'm sure all of you are well aware of that, but I don't think they get, everyone gives enough thanks to them. I also want to thank the other members of the Planning Commission for their hard work. There's, we had a little bit of turnover this year, a natural turnover that's on there, but I'd like to thank them. And finally, the planning staff themselves, Mr. Luke Jude and Sonny Yang, their professional leadership is invaluable to the Planning Commission as we go throughout the year. And I'm going to give a, just a very brief overview of the, of the report. The first thing, there was a number of rezonings and conditional use permits. There were two that were, two rezonings that were actually recommended and sent up to the council. And then the third at 201 Short Street was recommended, but it was just recently. That did not happen in 2018, but it did happen recently on there. As far as the CUPs, there were three that, again, were recommended and sent up, but there was one that was withdrawn on there. And then there were a number of requests, or at the request of the city manager, there were a number of amendments to the ordinance, and that was adopted in June of 2018. One of the big things, excuse me, that took a large part of the initial part of the year was the finalization of the 2018 Comprehensive Plan. As you all know, we put a lot of effort into that in 2017, and then that was carried over and finalized in 2018. And I think that was a big step for the town. And again, thanks to everybody that participated. The, in addition to that and associated with that is the transportation plan. It's a requirement that you work with VDOT and that they look over your transportation plan and they make recommendations and such. And that was, we spent a lot of time on that this year, and it's, it's actually being finalized as well, but a lot of effort went into that. And again, thanks to Luke and his staff for a lot of that. Some of the other planning efforts, there were four applications or projects that were submitted to the VDOT SmartScale. And as was kind of just pointed out, the VDOT SmartScale allows for funds to, so that we can get some of these projects taken care of. Unfortunately, there's not enough money go around, so it looks like at this point that the first two on there, the East Main Street Scape Project and the Rossar Roundabout are very likely to get funded by the SmartScale, which is, which is good. The last two probably will not see any funding anytime, you know, in the near future, anyway. Doesn't mean they're dead, but they're not going to be part of this initial round on there. We did do a few tours this year with the Planning Commission. We went to, we toured the Phase 3 of the Greenway, we went through the tunnel, we saw some of the city facilities like the water treatment plant, which, fantastic by the way. And it helps the, helps the Planning Commission to get a better understanding of what's going on within the city and the, get the, to see what the residents see in all the different areas of it, not just from up here. And then finally, looking forward, there's a, there's four different, actually, let me just put these up there. There's four different things that right now are on the books, are kind of concentrating on. Some of the entrance corridor design guidelines, there's a number of different entrances, obviously, into Waynesboro. And part of the Comprehensive Plan says that we want to maintain those and enhance those. There's some neighborhood, the same with some neighborhood plans, especially around the Exit 94 area, there, the Comprehensive Plan specifically spelled that out as well, and we certainly want to look into that. And then we're going to be looking at some more amendments to the zoning thing to further enhance things and again, to be consistent with the 2018 Comprehensive Plan. And actually, I think, I think that's it. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Kelly?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I would just add our appreciation for your work and the work of the commission. You know, you're the first, first line of defense for good planning, and we appreciate your work and the stewardship of that commission. And I also would want to mention too that, you know, we've got our first neighborhood plan meeting, right?
Yes, Wednesday.
Wednesday night, which is pretty exciting, Commerce and West Basic City.
Yes.
And that meeting will be held over at, is it, not?
At the school, the Winona School.
It's at Winona, okay. So that's at Winona at 7:00 PM, right? So, yeah, just another little plug for your work, so appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, thanks again.
Number seven is to conduct a public hearing and consider introducing an ordinance rezoning 588 North Beard Avenue Tax Map Number 37-1-4-1 through 37-1-4-9 through, from LI, Light Industrial to RG5, General Residential, upon application by Mr. Daryl Cole. Mr. Jude.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is one of the rezonings that Andrew mentioned, was in the 27, last, the last one that we passed in 2018, but now coming to you in 2019. So this is located at North Beard Avenue, which is over in the area that we're going to have that neighborhood meeting about coming up. But it's right near the intersection of Fourth Street, near the bridge. You can see a map here of the subject property with the surroundings. In the colors and the labels represent the zoning. They don't represent what the actual use is, though we've tried to mark some of the actual uses. For instance, continuing down Beard Avenue, you see this is all zone Light Industrial. It's actually all houses, residential uses. Then you have a lot of RG5, which is General Residential around the area. Then you have a number of other houses in the LI district, a self-storage building in the LI district, vacant building in the LI district, or I'm sorry, the AutoWorks is there right now. And then you have across the railroad tracks, significantly larger sections of RG5 and some local business, which actually has industrial uses in it. The whole area, and this is part of why, just to give a quick plug before I go to the rezoning, this whole area of the city has a lot of inconsistent zoning, areas that I would consider spot zoning. It doesn't, it's not really the point of zoning to have just parcel by parcel kind of scattered around. The current Comprehensive Map, Plan Map designates it as General Residential, and that's what the applicant is wanting to rezone to today. But we probably do want to have a larger reconsideration of what the zoning should be in that area, what the rules should allow. We've had a couple of applicants or of potential businesses come to us recently looking to locate in the area, and you look at it and you say, well, this really does fit here, but it's not allowed by the zoning. And it is allowed over here, a street over, but that actually wouldn't fit there at all. So I think it's an area that we're going to need to reconsider in the future. And the first step to that, I think, is having, starting with a neighborhood meeting and just seeing if there are people in the neighborhood, residents, who are interested in being part of that process, because we don't, I think, have a great neighborhood association or folks to rely on currently for input in that area. So that's my hope with that meeting. So if you're watching, if you live in the area or own property in that area and are interested in being a part of that conversation, please come out on Wednesday night. Or if you can't come out on Wednesday night, contact our office. But this particular rezoning, as I said, is a vacant, it's several vacant parcels and then one long building located right there on Fourth Street. As I said, it's currently zoned LI, but the rest of the street is mostly single-family residences and duplexes with a number of scattered light industrial buildings as well. The applicant is asked to rezone it from Light Industrial to RG5. Light Industrial allows various light industrial uses and some of the more noxious commercial uses. We've used it in the past as kind of a catch-all category for the types of things that you don't really want to see on a main corridor, but that aren't really heavy industrial. Proposes to rezone it to RG5, which allows for a range of housing options, all the way from, a lot of single-family homes are zoned RG5, all the way up to townhomes and duplexes and some multiplexes. The applicant's intention is to build two duplexes on the property. We think this is consistent with the rest of the street. There are several other duplexes along the street. We have a conceptual site plan here. Again, you don't need a full site plan for a rezoning of this scale, but this is just to give you a general concept of what it might be. The property currently has an existing building, which should be renovated to provide storage or other uses for the residences, and then he would propose building four units duplexes. This is a downzoning, which means it's a reduced entitlement. Technically, we have a hierarchy of zones, so you have the lowest zones, where you technically have the least entitlement and the most protections for neighbors, all the way up to heavy industrial, which is the, you can do, you know, whatever you want and you can belch smoke if you feel like it. So this is considered a downzoning, which means you're reducing that entitlement to have impact on your neighbors. That means in general that it should be easier to pass than, say, an upzoning. Usually, if we do an upzoning, the applicant would need to provide something because they're getting something essentially from the city. This is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan's designation for the area, which is mixed-use D, which includes civic spaces, public parks, restaurants, convenience, retail, and a variety of residential housing types. And it's consistent with the trend in the area, which has generally been from industrial properties to being repurposed as residential properties. And again, as I said, I think it's consistent with the rest of the street. There will be some remaining industrial uses around the property. We've recommended that the applicant be asked to install a buffer against that to hopefully improve the value of the homes there and help them to hold their value, and also to improve the aesthetic look of the area. The applicant has also proffered another condition, which is that they'll plant one tree, one street tree, for each unit that's constructed. So if they build the two duplexes as described, there'd be four trees planted along the street. Normally, we don't go into that kind of detail with a proffer on a rezoning, and I would tell you something like, that'll be taken care of during the site plan process, because we have standards for how things get built and you have to submit a site plan. But with a development this small, if all you're building is duplexes or single-family homes, you don't have to submit a site plan. So we've asked for it as a proffer associated with the rezoning. The Planning Commission heard the request at its December meeting and recommends approval on a 7-0 vote with the two proffered conditions, that a landscaping buffer equivalent to a Class C buffer be installed along the south side of the property, and that one street tree be planted along North Beard Avenue for each dwelling unit constructed. Again, this was the conceptual site plan, which shows trees in the buffer. Any questions?
Actually, Mr. Jude, I do have one question, just to, education for me. In the first map that you showed us, I can't help but notice that most of those gray lines go through the middle of buildings. What are those gray lines?
Those are the property lines. And back in the day, when they, when they plotted out all of Basic City and most of tree streets and a lot of the central parts of the city, they would cut all of the blocks into 25-foot sections and sell them as 25-foot sections. So you'd come in and say, I want, I want three sections, I want a 75-foot lot. Nowadays, that actually causes us some trouble because the current zoning system in Virginia and here in the city is set up based on lots. So in a single-family zone, you're allowed to put one house on one lot, and so you can't put something straddling a lot line. And so, yeah, we frequently have that issue and we've had to come up with different ways of interpreting that or of occasionally doing minor subdivisions and figuring out how to deal with situations in those areas.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Jude?
The applicant is here to available to answer questions if you have any for the applicant.
One question I have, so for the LI residential use- One question I have, so for the, the LI residential uses, so that's on the opposite side, so the, I guess what that would be, the northeast corner, where it has the vacant commercial building. So the balance of that, primarily residential uses, all and non-conforming LI.
That's correct.
Okay. So the question I had was just sort of like, so if, if we were to do a residential rezoning in, in some other places, and I'm not saying, I mean, there's, there are no sidewalks out here anywhere, right?
Yeah.
But, so what's the future for, I mean, either, either we see that vacant commercial property and that entire block becoming LI, or do we see it as residential? I mean, at some point, I think we have to sort of cut bait with, with uses, because, and I get the context, the context of down zoning, but we're actually up zoning all the parcels around it. Or in, in, in long, it's not the right way to say it. By down zoning the subject property into residential, we're accept, we're essentially placing those future inhabitants of those homes surrounding incompatible uses. Because we're retaining.
Yes, surrounding incompatible entitlements.
Yeah, a, a land use type that is inconsistent with existing habitat. So I would just be interested in what your, your take on, I mean, is that something, maybe we talk.
Well, no, I agree. I think that's why it's important for us to consider this area, and we need to do a larger study of the Basic City area. And that's kind of what I was saying, that the zoning in this area is all, all over the map and not really consistent with what's there on the ground. And as you said, at a certain level, this is not good zoning practice to have a general residential and then across the street, a bunch of industrial land. And it's not, doesn't really make it industrial, marketable industrial land either, so it's kind of not good for anybody. And so that's why, you know, as far as what's our vision now, well, this is all we've got right now, is our comprehensive plan land use map, which is pretty vague. So I think, I think we need to do a larger study of the area.
Okay.
But, yeah.
Awesome. Any other questions? Certainly, the, the applicant is, is here this evening?
Yeah, right.
So you're welcome. Do you have any words ahead of time, or save it? Okay. Great. So not hearing any, I will open the public hearing. Mr. Hand, do we have any speakers?
We do not have anyone signed up to speak, and traditionally, we would call on the applicant and offer them the opportunity to speak if they so desire.
Yep. Okay. With that, we will close the public hearing. Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Ordinance is introduced this evening, we'll, we'll take upon at our follow-up meeting in a couple of weeks. So thank you very much for being here. Item 7B is to conduct a public hearing and consider introducing an ordinance adopting the transportation plan as a supplement to the city's comprehensive plan. And so with that, Mr. Judee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. You've heard a lot about transportation tonight, so if you're tired and want to put this off, that's fine. But still, still good, still with me, then we'll move on to this. As you all know, we passed a comprehensive plan revision in 28, or earlier this year. And that comprehensive plan was a little non-traditional. It was almost, I would almost call it more like a corporate strategy document in the end, and it did not, it wasn't a, and we also wanted to make a document that would be accessible to people and that you could put into an attractive booklet, and it is an attractive booklet. If you'd like to see one, come talk to me. But we did not end up doing a lot of the nitty-gritty stuff that needs to be done as part of comprehensive plans. And in this case, we needed a transportation plan. So this year, we've worked on this transportation plan, comprehensive plan supplement, which we've tried to lay out similar to the comprehensive plan to go along with it. Why did we produce it? Starts with the Code of Virginia requiring it as part of the comprehensive plan, each locality shall develop a transportation plan, and it goes into a great deal of detail on what that transportation plan needs to include and how it needs to be coordinated with VDOT and generally a lot of specifics that we wanted to, to do ourselves. It establishes a direction for transportation improvements in the city. Again, it's not necessarily something, it's not, not that because all these things are in the plan, they're necessarily going to happen. We have lots of things in plans that have never happened, because things change and they weren't a good idea anymore, or the money just wasn't available. Generally, you've got more stuff in plans than you could possibly pay for. But everything that happens was in a plan. That's where it starts. It starts by being in the plan. The projects don't just get built if they're not in a plan somewhere. So that's the first thing, is that it, there needs to be a consistent direction and vision so that everything will work together in the end if it does happen. And then also, they're very important in applying for state and federal transportation grants. I know we wanted to do a little sidewalk extension down by Roster that I think might have even dealt with one of the crosswalk things that they brought up, and we couldn't get any revenue sharing money because it wasn't called out specifically in our plan. So trying to get all those things put into the plan so that, that grant money's available to us in the future. We did all of the work in-house. We avoided hiring a consultant. We felt that the city didn't have a dramatic change of direction on transportation to, to put in place, and we had a lot of other documents and project documents put together. There, there just wasn't a huge, a huge project to put together for this plan, and we felt that the staff could do it in-house and try to save us some money on consulting. Again, it's, it's not really a brand-new plan. It's not like this is a huge thing I have to unveil to you that you've never seen before. This is basically just a document that will consolidate all of our existing plans, all of the little plans we have floating around, and a lot of our little project documents and kind of all the things that we talk about all the time, we're going to get it in one place and one plan and a document that we can point to. So that's our, that's our vision. It's divided into sections, road network, sidewalk, bike, greenway, and transit in accordance with the state code. For the road network, we primarily were consolidating projects that are currently being discussed, everything that is kind of out there floating around. We're going to get it on paper where people can access it and, and see what is being talked about. For sidewalks, we have not had a sidewalk plan, that we've had a draft sidewalk plan and fragments of sidewalk plans. And so this will establish a clear sidewalk plan and a network and priorities for how that could be implemented. For the bike plan, we have a very robust bicycle plan already, so we've mainly just referenced the existing plan. For the greenways, we also have an existing greenway master plan, and we've just reaffirmed that and updated it on, with the current progress. And then for transit, deals mostly with the, the bright bus system. The process, we had a public kickoff meeting at the library in March. We did something that I think was a little bit innovative, in that we had an online map, a public comment map that we publicized, and people were able to go onto the map and mark locations and add their comments visually with where they were, and that was really helpful. We had planning commission work sessions and public hearings. I think we received close to 50 comments from citizens on various transportation issues throughout the process, which I thought was actually pretty good for us, quite a bit of input, and mostly helpful things that we were able to include in the plan. And we then went through VDOT review and, and went through a draft with VDOT of receiving their comments. Everything in the transportation plan has to be in accordance with the state transportation plan, which is called the trans and state code. So for our planning assumptions for the plan, the city is experiencing steady but not overwhelming population growth. We're actually doing a little bit better, our population is growing a little bit quicker here than in any of our immediate neighbors, neighboring localities. Population growth across the state is slowing, which is an important context to keep in mind, but cities have continued to grow, most of the central cities. But we probably won't see, you know, a dramatic explosion anytime soon. The growth in Waynesboro has been concentrated mostly at the northern and western edges of the city. Can't see this map super well, but in green are all of our kind of undeveloped areas of the city, and then the dots are new housing construction over the last few years. We also, another context to keep in mind for planning assumptions is that we have an increasing number of eastbound commuters, where traditionally, we did not have a whole lot of interaction between the city of Waynesboro and then east of the mountain in terms of commuting. We're seeing those numbers go up from LEHD estimated in 2005 that there were close to 1,300 Waynesboro residents commuting to Charlottesville, Almaral County. The most recent numbers are 2015, and they put it at about 1,550. So the number, and we hear anecdotally that that number seems to be going up. A few things, a few transportation priorities were called out specifically in the comprehensive plan, and so we put those at the beginning of the transportation plan as things. You can think of most of the transportation plan as what we would like to see at each location, or that's important to that specific category of transportation needs. These are the things that the comprehensive plan calls out as important to the city's long-term competitiveness and the overall vision of the comp plan. One of those was expanding the South River Greenway Trail. One was constructing a trail connecting East Main Street to the Croze Tunnel, and we tried a build grant for that this past year, did not receive it, but gave us a lot of good material to, to work with there. Redevelop aging commercial corridors to a higher aesthetic standard. A main focus of the plan was taking pride in our public spaces and our public corridors, and especially our main commercial thoroughfares. We have a lot of great neighborhoods where people take care of their houses, but many of our commercial corridors look fairly worn. Monitoring funding gaps in the VDOT maintenance money. We currently have, I think, a pretty good system. Public Works has it down to a science. They've got the truck that goes out and knows exactly where the cracks are in the pavement everywhere, in terms of trying to squeeze the most out of our, our VDOT urban maintenance money. But, you know, there's always going to be gaps, and I think roads are not quite at the level that they need to be, and after a while, you start to slip into a negative spiral. So we want to continue to monitor that and make sure we know when that's happening. And then it also said that a priority should be to adopt and implement a sidewalk plan. So this plan will, will fulfill that, and will be, will have already checked something off the comp plan. So for road network, this map, sorry, I'm going to show a lot of maps, and it might be kind of hard to see. But this shows volume to capacity ratio, VC, and that's the traffic on the road divided by the capacity. And maybe grant the transportation, oh, he left. Is he still here, transportation engineer? No, he's not. All right. He can tell me if that's just based on peak hours or not. But as you can see across most of the city, we have a lot of excess capacity. At one level, that's a good thing. We have very little traffic in Waynesboro. Maybe if I have long-term, Waynesboro residents might disagree with me, but compared to most localities, traffic in Waynesboro is pretty good. And we also have actually some of the shortest commute times in the state as well, which is great. Part of, that's sort of a result of the confluence of having very little traffic and a nice mix of employment and residences around. So I think our average commute time is around 15 minutes or something like that. That's also not necessarily a good thing either. If you have a lot of excess road capacity, that means you have a lot of asset that you're, and not as, very many people paying, going in together to pay for it, you're not making very efficient use of it. So it's sort of like if, you know, you have not a lot of people sharing paying for a house versus a lot of people sharing paying for a house, it's, all the people that are paying for it are going to pay a little bit more. So we are all paying a little bit more for roads, because there's not as many people using them. But generally, we have a pretty good traffic situation across the city, not a lot of concerns. The one area of concern is around that Roster Avenue exit 94 area, and that's, that's where we're closest to road capacity, you know, between 70 and 100% of road capacity at various times. And I think that's important for us to monitor, both because that's our key commercial area and because I think, and we also know this, that we get a lot of, I think at one point, we estimated something like 30 or 40% of, of dollars spent there coming from the east side of the mountain. And that's a lot of people who could go up to 29, or they could come over here, and they're saying, well, I don't want to fight 29, I'll come over here. So that's an important competitiveness thing for us to keep that traffic flowing there. It's also crucial, like Stewart's draft, and so I think projects like the signal timing are, are important for us, capacity-wise. This is VDOT's volume to capacity ratio projection for 2025. They're projecting more traffic on Ludewitt Boulevard, more traffic on Hope and Parkway. Some of these numbers, we think, are a little bit inflated because of the way that the formula was done, and we've, well, actually, Adam Campbell at VDOT thinks that they're a little bit higher than they should be. But we're likely to see, you know, some steady traffic increases, and probably Roster Avenue is the place where that'll be most visible. There's a map in the plan, and if we produce it here, which is of the major road projects that we call out in the plan. And again, the plan is mostly just trying to consolidate all of the projects that are floating around or kind of out there. There's maybe one or two that are brand-new, so I'll go over those. But quickly to summarize, this down here is the Southern Connector. That, we have full funding through Smart Scale from VDOT for that due to environmental concerns. It's, the project schedules become somewhat longer than it was meant to be, but it's still planned to be constructed, I think, within 2022 is their date now. This up here is the Ludewitt-Roster Connector, which is a proposed road that we've applied for twice with Smart Scale. We did not receive it the most, in, in the most recent round, and it receives a pretty bad score, which I think means that it's probably really not warranted and needs to be shelved for a while. The development in that area may end up giving us some of the same benefits if there's some connecting roads. We have Chircoole Lane down here, which is another continuing project. We have the, the Roster Avenue signal timing study, which you've heard a lot about tonight. I think that'll do a lot for us with, for traffic flow in the area. Up here, these are projects that we have really any momentum for at the moment, but eventually, as the northern part of the city expands, we want to emphasize connectivity, and that will include having better connector roads up in that area. A key theme that I think, you'll notice that, one of the reasons that we have very little traffic in the city is that we have an excellent interconnected grid network throughout the center of the city. Grids distribute traffic well, they are very walkable, and they allow for a lot of development to happen within them. In some of the edges of the city, we have pretty disconnected development, you know, where there's a lot of, you know, lots of homes built on one entrance, or a lot of winding or cul-de-sac type areas. And that tends to concentrate traffic on your main arterials, which you end up with is really underutilized streets in the residential area, and then a lot of heavy traffic on the main arterial. And then over time, that becomes kind of unsustainable as the area grows. So we do want to emphasize, and we have in the replating of a couple of these subdivisions, getting better connections. And so Claybrook and Evershire came in for plat amendments recently and changed their road configuration to allow more through traffic in the future. But that's just what this road up, up here is, is as this area develops, that those connections should be made. One thing I want to throw out there is that in the Code of Virginia, it says that if a road is shown on the comprehensive plan and the area is to be subdivided and, and developed, that the developer is required to build the roads as the city shows on the comprehensive plan, within reason, obviously, they're not engineered in the comprehensive plan, but, but that configuration, they do have to follow. So we are not bound to, you know, if there's a, a configuration of roads that's optimal for us, we can put that in the plan, and they will be required to follow, follow through with that. In fact, there are some communities that have what's called a master street plan, and that's actually how, like, for instance, Manhattan was built, is there was a master street plan that was put together in 1817, and I think it wasn't, you know, the last roads weren't built until early 1900s, but shows all of the roads and how they would, they're to be plotted out, and then as developers come in and subdivide, they just subdivide according to that configuration. Probably in the modern era, we wouldn't do something quite that detailed, but it, it is worth thinking about, that we might want to consider thinking through some of the different undeveloped areas of the city, and how could there be a road connection that's long-term sustainable, good for the city, efficient, and put that on a map so that we know what to tell a developer when they come in. I'll go through some of these other projects and a couple of slides, because some of them are somewhat new, or old, but we haven't been talking about them. One of them is Broad Street, right here. So the comp plan, a big priority of it was rebuilding some of our aging commercial corridors. And this one was specifically called out in the comp plan, the Broad Street Access Management Project. This goes all the way back to 2001 and to the, this is almost the only part of the downtown design plan that has still not been done. And that's to reconfigure Broad Street as a four-lane boulevard with left-turn accesses and medians with, with trees in them. We have a lot of, in the city, you know, 60-foot curb-to-curb shared left-turn lane in the center, kind of, we call them in the planning world, strods, street roads. I don't know what they are. Are they streets? Are they roads? Are they deprived access or through traffic? And those are fine and appropriate for rural areas that are developing. But over the long term, as you get more traffic on a road with shared left-turn lanes, the efficiency of the road goes down. They're not as efficient as having access management, as you saw from some of the stuff that was presented on the, on the roster study. But there are other big disadvantages to them in an urban context, like they're not very aesthetically appealing. They don't provide you with a sense of being in the city in an urban area. They can be big pedestrian barriers, because they're very hard to cross, they're very dangerous. They're also very dangerous for motorists, because they have an infinite number of conflict points, so you have a lot higher accident rate when you have those shared left-turn lanes. And so long-term, as the city grows and traffic increases, our hope would be to move towards access management projects like this, that would provide more trees in the middle that would break up and provide you with a better urban fabric. Pedestrian islands you can have then, that makes it easier to cross those roads, makes it less of a pedestrian barrier from downtown to the northern part of the city. Right now, Broad Street kind of separates all of our northern neighborhoods from, from the downtown area, and would also reduce the number of vehicle crashes. downtown area and would also reduce the number of vehicle crashes. So that's a, that's a long-term project. This was one of the, included in one of the projects that we applied for Smart Scale in this round, and it was not funded. Another one that's new on here is West Main Access Management Project, the same thing. We don't have, you know, the Broad Street one, this has been in every single plan that we've done since 2001. So this is something that's established that needs to be done. West Main, we've not discussed at all, so this is kind of its first time being put into a plan, but the same issues apply there. Eventually, we'll have to move towards an access management project, and I'd like to see it be something that is aesthetically pleasing and contributes and creates value for the businesses around it. It's been, one reason that it's coming up now and coming into the plan now is that VDOT did a potential for safety improvement study, and they have a big map that's available to anybody online. I put a link to it in the plan. It's really interesting to go look at. But it has every crash that's happened in the last however many years, I think five years, and it has all of the segments and intersections that they identify as being both unsafe and where there's things that you could do about that, where you could pretty easily achieve some safety improvement. And they've called out the whole West Main corridor as an area with a huge potential for safety improvement, I think one of the highest in the district. Terry, correct me if I say anything a little off about this.
One I differ.
Yeah. So this is an example of a post conversion. This is in Stanton, where they've taken a shared left-turn lane, created a median in the middle, trees, you know, all that. Another project on here is the East Main Street Streetscape, and this is the one that we believe we will receive Smart Scale funding for. East Main Street was a big focus of the comp plan. It's our main gateway to areas on the east of the mountain, and we've had a lot of momentum there in terms of outdoor recreation-oriented businesses coming in. And it's also an area where we have a lot of pedestrians walking, folks for whom that's their primary mode of transportation, and it's not very hospitable for pedestrians. And we have conflicts between people who want to park and people who want to use the bike lanes. So one project suggested in here is the East Main Street Streetscape Project. This is from a 2013 study we have that was done for the downtown area. So it's sort of got several components to it. On the part of East Main Street closest to the river, that's sort of part of downtown, it would be pretty conventional, striping bike lanes and parallel parking and trying to make better use of that road space. We have a very wide road and it's just not really striped to make efficient use of it. On the eastern part of town, we're proposing some little median, kind of gateway medians and crosswalk. We've got the kombucha place here now. This is all from a conceptual study that was done years ago, but it sort of illustrates, we've got the kombucha place here now, we've got a coffee shop coming in on the place across the street. Eventually, that'll probably be your access point for Croze Tunnel Trail. This is an area that we expect to see people walking around and hanging out in the future. And so we, and it's also kind of where you visually come into the city, and so we want to create a visual marker for that, where the road divides a little bit, you have some trees, you have some signage, you have people there. This is what Waynesboro is, so we want to create a gateway at that end of it. And then in the middle, we want to create a stronger pedestrian connection because we have this South River Greenway downtown, which is fantastic. Then we have the Croze Tunnel Project going on, and we're trying to get that Croze Tunnel Trail built down to East Main Street. But in between them, we want a strong link from downtown all the way out to the eastern neighborhoods. And so the proposed East Main Streetscape that is likely going to be funded, one quick thing to note about the Smart Scale, the applications are every two years. If you get funding, the way that it works in Virginia, you don't actually see the projects start to happen for like six years. So it's just the way it is. Brutal.
It's just five years right now.
Maybe five years, yeah. Well, you won't see it actually be done building, being built, yeah. So this is a long-term thing, but we are likely going to get full funding, which is exciting. And the plan that we propose to them would slightly narrow, we'll still have to do public meetings on this and so forth, but would slightly narrow the profile of Main Street because we have, again, a lot of excess pavement out there. It would remove the bike lanes and restore parallel parking on one end, and then would construct a separated greenway, you know, shared-use bike and pedestrian trail along the road that would connect all the way from where the kombucha place and the new coffee shop are into downtown through Basic City Brewery and so forth. So I think that could be a really exciting project potentially. And I think will make us more competitive for things like the Croze Tunnel Trail. Another thing that's new in this plan that I wanted to point out is a Kirby or Fourth Street connection. And this is something that, you know, the Basic City area was platted out in grids and then sections of the grid were built as developers came in and built houses, and they weren't really built according to any consistent, you know, plan, exactly where this or that went. So what we've ended up with is a pretty significant section up here towards Fifth Street, Jackson, Kirby Avenue, where we're up to, I want to say 130, yeah, 130 homes that are all on one intersection, which has bad sightlines and is not built to current city standards, that intersection. And that's a public safety hazard, the fire chief will tell you that. We have a situation where also, it's not a very hard thing to fix, you know, less than 200 feet of street would create a second access point at any of probably four locations along that grid. We don't have any priority level for this yet or funding mechanism. We haven't done any public outreach on it except have a planning commissioner from that area who thinks it's a great idea. But we, we have had some developers approach us about property off of Jackson Avenue, property off of May and Kirby. You know, we're likely to see, these homes are actually all fairly new up here, they're built in the early 2000s. You know, it's an area that's not dormant. There is activity happening up there, and we really can't be having this many homes on one intersection when that intersection has potential for hazard crashes and you need to be able to get fire trucks up there and that type of thing. So for traffic flow and all that, that's something we wanted to throw on there. So that's new as well. And then the Northern Connector, I explained that already, as that area develops will become necessary. So that's the road projects. Sorry, I'm taking up a ton of your time here, but it's big stuff. So the sidewalk plan, this is important because walkability is a huge thing for people when they're purchasing houses now. That's consistent across the country. We've seen that houses that are in areas that are very walkable are gaining value a lot faster than in other areas. And downtown Waynesboro has a huge advantage here, and it's not due to really hardly any infrastructure other than, you know, some sidewalks and the tree streets and right downtown. It's really because of that grid system, back to why that grid system is so great. It makes it very walkable, allows for a big mix of uses and for a lot of quick connections to places. Walkscore.com gives downtown Waynesboro a walk score of 80 plus. However, we do have, you know, a lack of sidewalks in a lot of areas of the city to access that zone, and we do have a fair share of pedestrian-vehicle collisions. This is a problem across the country, and many cities are trying to take steps to reduce those. Here in Waynesboro, we've had 36 pedestrian-vehicle collisions in the last five years, four of them fatal. And that's, you know, at a certain level, it's inevitable that you'll have collisions in any system where there are pedestrians and cars, but you can do things to reduce that, and cities across the country are taking steps to try to reduce that, and I think that's an important goal of the plan. So some big themes from the sidewalk plan, in the comp plan. One is that establishing a consistent sidewalk construction capacity or reliable sidewalk contract is important. Sidewalks cost a lot of money, and having the capacity to do that a little bit every year, you know, it's, one approach would be to say, well, let's, let's fix the sidewalk problem and borrow a ton of money and do that now. And that doesn't really make any sense financially or in terms of how you're building out your capacity. But as our planning commissioner, Steve Arie, often likes to point out, he used to be a town attorney in Bluefield, and they recognized that they had a, you know, pedestrian infrastructure problem and established a small crew and, you know, identified a reasonable number of projects every year and chipped away at it. And 15 years later, you look around the town and, wow, it's actually really, really well-done. So establishing a consistent capacity is important so that, you know, we're not looking at it as discrete projects, but as a, as a program of improvements. Ensuring adequate pedestrian infrastructure is provided in all major new developments. The planning commission has been very vigilant about this for the last, or at certain points in Waynesboro's history, we opted to waive the sidewalk requirement in most of the new subdivisions. And so that's, that's really the key time when that infrastructure gets built, the developer's the one that comes in and builds the roads and sidewalks and all that. So waiving that may save them some money right then, but it means that years later, we're having to spend the money to come in and install it. And so the first step to sidewalk plan is ensuring that new developments have sidewalks. And our newest developments have all been, all been passed with sidewalks or with greenway trails as an alternative. Another theme is improving crosswalks, pedestrian refuges, and signals on major roads. Crossings are a huge time when these, those accidents happen, and so developing better crossing points, the access, that's part of why the access management projects are so big. I consider those the road projects, but they're almost as important for pedestrians as the sidewalk projects are, because being able to cross those streets is so much easier if you don't have to cross 60 feet of pavement and you can just cross 22 feet of pavement and have a pedestrian refuge. And then prioritizing access to the walkable amenity-rich areas like downtown as well as access to schools. In the prioritization scheme we came up with, we tried to look at, you know, we don't have counts, like in road planning, we can go out and get a number of cars that are driving here and there, and you can do pedestrian counts, but in a city like Waynesboro, you're going to have to be there a long time to get a small number. And theoretically, people aren't walking in some instances because there's no infrastructure, and so, you know, we've had to come up with other ways to prioritize, and we're trying to, to look at routes that people would take into highly walkable areas. And then prioritize projects that provide the highest marginal safety improvement is a big theme. There are areas where there's probably people walking, but it's not a bad place to walk. Lots of our residential streets are nice places to walk. And we might want to fill in the sidewalk as an aesthetic thing or even just to provide a little better pedestrian connectivity in the future, but there are areas where it's not, where it's not only necessary to walk, but very, very difficult, and that's where we should really focus. Most of the accidents, the pedestrian-vehicle accidents happen on our major arterials like Main Street, Delphine, Rossar, and that's where that, the sidewalks need to be looked at. And then we also want to look at multi-use asphalt paths as an alternative to sidewalks. Asphalt can be a little bit cheaper to maintain over the long run, and often they can be really nice if they're done well. So we have that in our, as it knows the subdivision ordinance amendment we passed last year, we provided developers the option to build eight-foot-wide multi-use paths as an alternative to sidewalks on both sides. Here's our existing sidewalk network. As you can see, it's pretty strong in the tree streets and down towards Lynnhurst Avenue, strong around Commerce Avenue and right off of East Main Street in Basic City. And then we have some kind of scattered areas of sidewalks around the rest of the city, some of our arterials. But pretty weak all across the western part of the city, across the northwestern part of the city and the northern part up here. And the northern part, we just have it along the main, the main thoroughfares. And you can see it start to be built out in some of the newer subdivisions. So this is the sidewalk plan. The dark red here is our Tier A1 projects. We want to prioritize cleaning up pedestrian accessibility along Broad Street and along Rossar, as well as greenway connectivity on East Main and further, further up Delphine and Basic City. And then we have kind of Tier A2 projects and, and Tier B projects that we eventually want to extend the sidewalk network further out West Main Street. That's an area where we have a lot of desire paths where people, you know, people have trod down the grass. Clearly, people want to walk here, but, but they're not able to. And then we have some definite improvements we need to do at intersections around the Lucy Lane and Ludewitt-Rossar, some of which were pointed out by the Rossar Avenue Small Area Study that Ann Cundy presented to you about. And then the next section was the bicycle plan. Here, we just did a brief summary and reaffirmation of the city's existing bicycle plan. The city passed the plan, I believe in 2012, 2013, and have installed, we've installed 8.2 miles of bike lanes since then, and that'll continue in line with the city's repaving schedule. Greenway Plan, we just reaffirmed the 2001 Greenway Master Plan, and then also summarized the existing projects and laid out potential future expansions. Again, so we have this section built, there's some sections built up here around Anna Maria and Evershire, and then we have, we're going to have some sections built along the Southern Connector when that gets built. We currently have funding or are working on funding for the section up to North Park, Phase 2B, for the section to Ridgeview Park, Phase 3, where we're trying to, you know, there's not a good optimal route there, so that's an issue that's being dealt with. And then we now have, and we should update this map as of, whenever they approve it, funding for extending it out East Main Street. Current priorities from our perspective, but again, we're very much open to change or input from the council on this. Once those sections are all completed, I would say the next place we'd want to go is continue to focus on trying to get a connection to the Croze Tunnel, since that'll be open probably next year. And then also work on Phase 4 up to Basic Park. We have a situation here where we could have a pretty significant stretch of river that we cover, where there's only one landowner in our way currently. It would be very inexpensive, it's all floodplain land, so that's a section that we could theoretically complete cheaply and quickly if we wanted to. And then we'll look at also some sections up here around the District Home and around these new subdivisions where we've asked the new subdivisions to dedicate property to us for the greenway. And so, and then we may also want to look at trails and ways to connect with Sunset Park. And the last section is public transportation. Just reaffirm our commitment to the Bright Bus System. They do a great job of managing our regional, regional bus system. We have had, I'll just put in a little plug, we've had some transit-related improvements that they rely on us to do, things like they, Bright relies on the cities and the county to maintain the bus stop signs and bus shelters, and they've lately been wanting to install more bus shelters and add more bus stops in the city. And Public Works and the Streets Department worked with them to install a number of new bus stop signs recently, and we have also installed one bus shelter at the Springdale, and we're going to be building another one in the spring at the library. But they have more bus shelters that they love to give us if we have money to install them. So that's one thing we'll have to, I think it would be helpful to put in a line item in the budget in the future for those types of improvements. And it doesn't really have to be very much at all, actually. And then continuing to participate in the Interregional Bus Pilot Project. This is the project to develop a commuter bus from Stanton all the way over to Charlottesville, stops in Waynesboro. A study was done, they concluded that it was a big need and that it would, it was a very feasible project. And unfortunately, it's going to require wrangling matches from a bunch of different localities and getting everybody to sign up for it. We so far have been unwavering in saying that we support it, and so the plan just says that we should continue to say that we'll support it if the other localities come through on it. I'm not sure if that'll happen or not. And then also supporting construction of park and ride lots where appropriate. We've got the one being constructed down at exit 94. So that is the transportation plan. That was a lot, sorry about that. But in summary, it compiles all the existing initiatives and plans into one easily accessible document. This will make it easier for you or for planning commission, I think, to propose changes in the future. If you say, this is a real transportation need, what's the first step to make this happen? I, you know, there should be sidewalks here. First step is you say, I'd like to propose an amendment to the transportation plan. So we have that all in one place now, and we can have that document and use it. Again, it doesn't mean that everything or anything in the plan will happen without projects being funded and initiated, but everything that happens will be in the plan. So that's the first step. Are there questions about it?
Any questions?
Jay?
Yes, sir.
I had a couple, a couple of questions. The, the Hope and Parkway, I mean, obviously, first, I just more of a comment. I think from the combination of Mr. Kelly's presentation and then this, I mean, it's, it's a pretty exciting time in that we've, we've seen, you know, prior to my arrival in council, there was already an uptick in, in new housing starts, and we're now hit a point where we're pretty solidly above where we were pre-recession in terms of new housing, which is pretty exciting and really exciting parts of the city of where it's sort of happening. Specifically to Hope and Parkway, I mean, we've got the, there's a couple of the nuances of the, of the new road connections, new, new alignments, whereas, but there weren't any recommendations relative to Hope and Parkway specifically. And because anybody that's been following, you know, the timeline of greenways in, in any community, not just Waynesboro, it can take many, many decades to facilitate that. And so whereas if there was a, it's just, it's an idea, I mean, I think there could be value in, in exploring a widening from Ivy back towards William Perry, Long Hope and, because it is a two-lane facility. And so as it continues to grow, folks want to access the east and commute east to 340 and head south. And it could also provide an opportunity for a shared-use path that connect over to the greenway itself while we wait for another generation for the greenway. So that was just more of a, you don't have to respond, it was just sort of an idea. And the other one would be for, for Bright Bus and, and the shelters, it's just an acknowledgement that, I mean, I think that an increasing need and, boy, our, our regional commission has really just done an outstanding job of, of turning regional transportation and the bus service here and really improved it significantly. And so I would echo that, I think, in finding ways to make improvements and additional accommodations for shelters, this was super important. One, one location specific that I've, that I, I see almost folks sitting on the pavement with their feet in, over the, over the gutter, over the curb on a regular basis is in front of Kate Collins Middle School, which is targeted for a shelter, but no funds have been identified for that, so if there's, I would certainly entertain, I think, that conversation. I don't know what, what they cost.
Yeah, I think the shelters, they actually, Bright Yeah, I think the shelters, they actually, Bright can get through their budget and provides to us, but we have to install it, and so we have to pour the concrete pad and do the installation. The Streets Crew does that, and the cost runs, depending on difficulty of the spot, from $4,000 to $8,000 per shelter. So it might be the kind of thing where you just put a little line item in and do one every year or something like that.
Yeah, I mean, there are literally people sitting on the curb with their feet in the street on a very regular basis, so it's concerning. Okay. Any questions from council?
No, sir. Good job, Luke.
Great, thank you, Luke.
Thank you.
So we will proceed with a public hearing on the matter, and if there's not for public comment, is there anyone that's signed up?
No, sir.
Okay, we will close it. So why do it again? We'll save the presentation, and, you know, we post it on YouTube, we can sort of share that. The reason that I think, I particularly wanted to hold off on formally affirming it this evening was, for lots of reasons, there's the, sort of the quality of the graphics online, they were almost impossible to read, and so I thought it was just sort of important that if we were serious about taking public comment, that it was in a format that was accessible to people, and so wanted to just provide that opportunity. So that's why, there's no real rush, we just want to make sure folks have a chance to look at it and offer some comments.
So, Mr. Mayor, before we move on, I think it's important that we have a motion and a second and a vote that we will continue the ordinance and re-advertise the public hearing.
Okay, so with that, is there a motion?
Is it appropriate to wait until Mr. Allen?
Wait till, we'll circle back to that one and confirm that motion, we'll circle back to that agenda item.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Great. Don't let me forget, Mr. Ham.
Okay.
All right. Number eight is to consider authorizing the sale and consumption of, on public property in association with the South River Fly Fishing Expo, Saturday, April 27th and Sunday, April 28th in Constitution Park. Mr. Ham.
So because this is the sale and consumption of alcohol on public property, this event application comes specifically for the sole authorization for that aspect of the event.
Okay. So with that, since we've got another motion, I'll circle back to that one as well. Actually, why don't we take a five-minute recess?
Okay.
Okay. So with that, we were going to consider a motion to introduce the ordinance and re-advertise the public hearing for the transportation plan. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Great, thank you. Any discussion?
No, I would say I do encourage people to look through the plan. There's a lot of detail there, a lot of exciting ideas, but I think it is going to take some time to process all that, as, you know, Luke had done a good job presenting here this evening, but it gives people a chance to sort of look through it and give us their comments, so I think it's appropriate.
Great. Thank you. All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries? Thank you. Number eight is to consider authorizing the sale and consumption of alcohol on public property in association with the South River Fly Fishing Expo, Saturday, April 27th and Sunday, April 28th in Constitution Park. Mr. Ham.
So, again, this application comes to council only for the authorization of the sale and consumption of alcohol specifically in association with the event and according to ABC regulations.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions? Is there a motion to approve the request?
I'll make it motion.
Great, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries? Thank you. Number nine is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating a Virginia tourism grant in the amount of $14,047 to the general fund for reimbursement of advertising expenditures in the tourism department. Mr. Ham.
These expenditures occurred largely in the areas of website development, visitor guide production. I think you've each been furnished a copy of our new visitor's guide. I think it's an impressive product, and then digital advertising.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions? Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance?
So moved.
Great. Any ordinance introduced this evening will be reconsidered at our upcoming council meeting. Okay, item 9B is to consider appropriating the general fund unspent appropriation reserve in the amount of $507,768 for transfer to the school operating fund for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2019. Mr. Ham.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, the unspent appropriations to the school system by law revert back to the locality, and traditionally, with rare exception, city councils have, upon request by the schools, re-appropriated the unspent funds back to the school system. With rare exception also, the schools have used the funds for capital acquisitions, maintenance, repair endeavors, and the school board has requested re-appropriation of the unspent funds from the fiscal year that ended June 30th of 2018. Dr. Castle communicates this request on their behalf, and he has indicated an intention to use the funds for capital acquisition and maintenance as they have traditionally, provided that any shortfall in the operating budget attributable to decline in enrollment can be absorbed. You may, or you should be aware that our school system for the last several years has contended with sort of unpredictably fluctuating enrollment. We were at an all-time high several years ago and then experienced almost inexplicably a decline of sufficient substance to impact state funding and make that sort of a budgetary concern for the superintendent and the school board. So having said that, and at this point, Dr. Castle indicates that he doesn't anticipate that an enrollment decline would present a budget problem, but wants to communicate clearly to the council that if, in fact, one materialized, they would like to reserve the ability to use the reappropriation to plug a shortfall in their operating budget. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. I would offer that in the past, so these capital acquisitions or maintenance endeavors have included things like acquisition of vehicles, buses, or vans, replacement or repair of HVAC units, replacing carpet in schools. I think this year he would anticipate, well, anticipates a couple of specific projects. For example, Berkeley Glen has a large freezer that is used to store produce and items that need to be refrigerated for the district wide, and that freezer and refrigerating unit are not on a generator. And so one of the capital projects that he's identified, and I think that the school board has confirmed, would be addressing the important need to put that facility on a generator. Similarly, I think a specific project that would be, receive consideration would be door and window replacement at Berkeley Glen. Believe it or not, those are the original doors and windows at that school, and none of us, the school, the city municipal organization, or the school board anticipate that Berkeley Glen doesn't have a long future with our community, so he would start on that project as well. And finally, he uses, or the school system uses, these funds to accomplish various floor covering, painting, roof repair type operations as well.
That's great. Are there any questions?
I have one question. The amount this year, Mr. Ham, it's unusually large, isn't it, compared to what we usually have in the past?
It is atypical, yes.
Is there kind of any Reader's Digest version of why that might be that reason?
Sure, so a couple of things. If you'll give me a second here. So the school systems build their budgets on an enrollment forecast that is established first in the spring of the preceding, no, excuse me, let me think about this for a second. It's established in the fall of the current fiscal year. Their funding is not confirmed until an enrollment account, an enrollment count that occurs in February or March. If any true-up is required, so for example, if you built your budget on 3,100 students and you discover in March that you have 2,098 students, that's a sufficient discrepancy that's going to impact the level of state revenue, and you're going to have to make operating adjustments to account for that shortfall. Essentially, the school system only has a quarter of the fiscal year left to make those adjustments, so beginning in January and February, they operate on a very conservative basis, and I think that led to it. There was a suspicion that, or I shouldn't say suspicion, there was an uncertainty surrounding our average daily enrollment last fiscal year. Also, the school system, you may know, is the largest employer in the city, and they experience attrition similar to ours. I wouldn't say it's as extensive or pervasive of ours as ours, but people leave employment with the city during, excuse me, with the school system during the fiscal year. Sometimes they replace those or refill those positions, and sometimes they don't, and I think in this particular year, Dr. Castle carried a fair number, a fair amount of vacancy savings. And then finally, I think there was some unanticipated state grant or federal grant revenues that kind of pushed the revenues to a more healthy position than originally planned. I would also say, and we had this experience some on the municipal side, both organizations were in the process of transitioning in their financial software, and both organizations have had new leadership established, and I think even the conservative, our typical conservative financial stewardship, there was an additional layer of conservatism laid onto that, given the changes that were occurring with software and personnel, to make sure that we understood our position and managed our expenditures accordingly. So I think there were four or five key factors that make the last year somewhat exceptional.
And just so I know and understand, that the majority of things that this money would be used for would be a one-time, not a reoccurring expense or expenditure that the school plans to spend that money for.
That's correct, yes, sir. Provided, I mean, with the one cautionary note, that if they get an enrollment problem that they're, that they can't contend with, they would like to reserve the ability to use some of the funds. I certainly wouldn't, based on the feedback that I got from Dr. Castle, I don't think that would be a situation in which all of the funds would have, would be needed, but some of the funds.
Thank you, Mr. [inaudible].
Those are good questions. Okay, well, so I think it's timely, too, with respect to the discussion that we had last week relative to continuing to strengthen those relationships and conversations with the school board, to invite further discussion, you know, the two-on-twos or it's a larger group, to have a conversation about how we can be a partner in that, you know, they can't hold on to reserves at the end of the fiscal year, whereas we can. So I think it's important for us to fully understand the needs for the capital investments and restoration, rehabilitation of assets, and how we can be a partner, in some cases, perhaps a better partner, in forging ahead and working cooperatively with the capital improvement plan. So I look forward to those discussions. So with that, are there any additional questions? Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance?
I'll introduce.
Great, thank you. All right, next on the agenda is communication correspondence and calendar. Mr. Ham.
I don't have anything this evening, sir.
Great, thank you. Number 11 is citizen comment period.
Yes, sir, we have one individual signed up to speak, Ms. Jen Lewis.
Ms. Lewis, if you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Sure, Jennifer Lewis, 113 Iris Drive. And first, I want to know where that greenway trail is on Anna Marie. I need to know about that. But I am here, I don't know how to officially do this, but I am here to ask, I guess, or request that the council pass a resolution in support of the Equal Rights Amendment. I don't know if any of you have been paying attention to the news, but it's currently in our state legislature right now, and we're having difficulty getting it passed on the state level, but we're seeing that with every support that we get from localities saying that they support this resolution, it kind of helps us when dealing with our House of Delegate Representatives and our senators. Locally, we've had Stanton sign on, Harrisonburg, Charlottesville, basically all of the cities of Virginia have signed on to this. So I'm here tonight to request that the city of Waynesboro also adapts this resolution in support of the Equal Rights Amendment.
Okay, great.
Now what happens?
Thank you. Well, we would typically accept and acknowledge your comments, and then we can chat afterwards. I think the idea is we don't get into a back and forth in the public comment period.
Oh, yeah, okay. I just didn't know what the process was after.
Yeah.
Will it be discussed at another city council meeting?
I'm happy to talk to you about it offline.
Okay.
Yeah, and the role of local government and state government, and the roles of different functions of government, because I certainly don't want anyone from Richmond to come and and.
I know all of the different roles of state and local government. I'm saying in this process, if a citizen approaches city council and makes this request, what do you do with that now? Is this brought up in your guys' private meeting and then brought up again at a city council meeting? Because all these other cities have passed this ordinance, so I don't think that they're necessarily concerned that Richmond was going to be upset about it.
Yeah, yeah, I'm happy to talk to you afterward.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that, is anyone else? All right, number 12, we don't have a closed meeting this evening? All right, so number 13, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make it motion.
Great, thank you.